Good evening, everyone. This is the March 26, 2019, meeting of the Islam Meadow Town Council. We'll begin our meeting this evening with a pledge of allegiance followed by a moment of silence.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
In addition to our servicemen and women around the globe and our first responders, tonight we remember Mary Turner, who was a longtime assistant to the clerk in our town office from 1980 to 1995, who passed away last week. Thank you. In accordance with Mass General Law, this meeting is being video and audio taped. If there is anyone in the audience video or audioing, please identify yourself. We have a small fan base tonight, so it doesn't appear that anyone else is taping the meeting. Moving on to item number three, public comment. Do we have anyone registered?
Nobody signed up for tonight.
Thank you. Item number four, council comments. Okay, moving right along to number five, town manager's report. You're on deck very quickly tonight.
I am. And actually, I've been assured this probably will be a short meeting because I think there is basketball tonight, so people will be motivated to speak quickly, I think. So, good evening. A significant amount of the last month has been devoted to gathering the information needed for this evening's budget presentation. Keeping in mind that last year the council requested a more detailed draft budget, this year's presentation will include all department requests showing salary and non-salary expenses with no cuts made prior to submission to the council. Along with the general salary, no, general enterprise and revolving fund budget requests, the presentation will include revenue projections for fiscal year 2020 and the previously recommended capital projects for 2020. As we have discussed, it is planned that detailed budget discussions will be held during budget workshops tentatively planned for Tuesday, April 2nd and Tuesday, April 19th. The annual rabies vaccination clinic held at A.W. Brown's on March 16th was a multi-departmental effort between the health department, the clerk's office, who was on hand to issue the dog licenses, and the collector treasurer's office, who was there to receive any cash payments. The first 50 vaccines were provided free of charge by Porter Road Pet Care, and we had wonderful support and participation from Second Chance Animal Hospital, who generously used one of their grant programs to provide residents with $5 vaccines, normally $12. A total of 58 animals were vaccinated and the total dogs licensed was 36. So that was a big success. Public Works received notification that Islam Meadow has received a grant for $84,000 for the continuation of their asset management plan. This will help with next year's reporting to the DEP for new requirements as well as helping the town identify deficiencies within the system for long-term replacement planning. The asset management plan will combine the three water information resource systems, drinking water, storm water, and wastewater, into a common software and data collection system capable of being utilized singularly or as a whole for capital planning as well as calculating annual budget items. On April 6th, multi-departments, health, fire, police, and public works are joining efforts to host a townwide trash cleanup day, and it seems like it's a pretty popular event. Pre-registration is required through the health department and all are welcome. I've attached a copy of a recent planning board marked Agenda. The reason I've attached it is to see if it is something that you would like forwarded to you, just so that you get, and we can just, I'm sure, have you added as another just piece of the distribution. It's not going to cause more work, you can ignore it if you want, but it might be good to just be informed what's going on. So, I see people nodding heads?
I think that's a good point.
Okay, so we'll do that. As a follow-up to the community preservation committee's requirements that were discussed at the last council meeting, after a number of conversations about CPC requirements, it's been learned that the public hearing that we discussed as needed is really not needed. And thank you to the two CPC folks that were here tonight for really helping unwind that twisted trail of, do we need it, how does it work, who says what to who, when. So, it really has been done very well. They spoke to state CPC people, and they now will redo the process specific for this recreation presentation that you saw. There was maybe some misinterpretation of what had happened in the past. It's going to be straightened out, and the CPC board, as it is now, is really on board for getting that done correctly. At the last council meeting, the average town manager's salary in Massachusetts was stated as $112,000. For the record, I've asked the Mass Municipal Association for a survey of town manager's salaries for Massachusetts communities with a population of 112,000 to 18,000. I've attached the results of the survey for your information. Library trustee Virginia Robbins will be retiring from the library board after 40 years of service, and a reception's going to be held on April 17th at the library from 6:30 to 7:30. All of you are welcome, and I hope you'll be able to attend. I'm sure it'll be a great event and a long time of service for that lady, for sure. As suggested at the last council meeting, the evaluations of my performance have been posted on the town's website, on the town manager's page. The schools have three groups of students going to the VEX Robotics World Championships, and actually, the superintendent helped me write this because I thought, I don't know what he's saying right now. VEX Robotics, and it'll be held in Louisville, Kentucky, April 24th through the 27th. Two high school 11th graders, Deshaun Callahan and Joseph Smith, who are operating a robot that was built, that they've built, and one of the highest-scoring robots in southern New England. Again, I don't know robot talk real well, so if you all want more information, certainly, I'm sure the superintendent or the robotics teacher coordinator can help you.
It is an amazing thing to see these kids develop, you know, plan on paper, and then program for it, and do all the coding, and build it, and to execute what they're doing.
Great thinking, yeah, yeah.
And our high school teams have repeatedly appeared and repeatedly medaled or won or whatever, and that has trickled down over time, and I recollect that we have groups as young as third grade.
Yeah.
Third grade.
We have robots going on.
That is amazing.
Who is?
Yes. So, since I named the high school kids, I should also name the nine Birchland Park Middle School students. They'll be in Louisville the week after the high schoolers, and those students are Grade Six Porter Carroll, Gabe Martin, Sam Wachowski, Nathan Laflame, Jackson Stephan, John Van Ender Tyne. Close?
Van Enderstein.
That's Grade Six. And Grade Seven are Tom Fitzgerald, Anna Osborne, and Eric Nguyen. Congratulations to all of them, and good luck to both teams. That's all I have. There are a few dates to remember, and that's my report for this evening.
To the president?
Thank you.
I'm not the best at math, but if April 2nd is a Tuesday, April 19th isn't a Tuesday, so is it the 16th or the 19th?
When I said that, I thought, I don't think those add up. I think it's...
Tuesday is the 16th, because it's the last day of tax season.
Okay, so then it's... Oh, you would know.
He says with a smile.
So, that's not happening for you.
Probably not, no. Unless I'm mistaken. Well, maybe, who knows?
That's why I said proposed, because we can talk about it maybe during the budget discussion as to what works and how long you want them to be. Then I will schedule the departments in accordance to how much time we're allotting and whether we're going to do any budget at the next council meeting, regular scheduled council meeting.
Thank you. Okay, moving on to item six, approval of minutes. You have in your packet the March 12, 2019, open session minutes.
I want to make a motion that we continue the approval of the minutes to our next meeting. I just need a little more time to work on my edits.
Second.
You have a motion before you to postpone or table to our next meeting. Is there any other discussion? Hearing none, all those in favor of tabling the March 12, open session minutes, please say aye.
Aye.
Those opposed, please say nay. Motion carries. The minutes are tabled for now. Under number seven, communication correspondence and announcements. Anybody have anything? Wow, we are zipping along. Orders of the day, item 8A. Under licensing matters, a one-day liquor license for the Masonic Temple for purposes of a birthday party on April 27th. You have that information as well in your packet.
Is the motion approved for one-day liquor license?
Second.
Motion's been made and seconded to approve the one-day liquor license for the Masonic Temple for April 27th. Any discussion? Hearing none, all those in favor of approving this license, please say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, please say nay. Motion carries, the license is approved. Okay, financial matters, 8B. Number one, B1, approval of two prior-year bills for the planning department totaling The lady with the numbers?
She's going to bring everything. So, actually, the revised amount is $136. There were two bills, now we're only asking for one. As of yesterday afternoon, the planning department is going to go to the developer that caused the other bill and have the developer directly pay that bill rather than the town pay it and try to collect after. So, it's only one bill.
And again, would you state the amount?
$136.00, and it is for the reminder. It was for an ad that ran two days, posting about a planning hearing.
Okay. Any other questions? Thank you. I'll entertain a motion.
I'll make a motion to approve the prior-year bill for the planning department for $136.
Second.
From free cash, correct?
From free cash.
Thank you.
Second.
Motion's been made and seconded. Any other discussion? Hearing none, all those in favor of approving a prior-year bill of $136 from free cash, please say aye.
Aye.
Those opposed, please say nay. The motion is approved?
Thank you.
Number two, this is also you, Sarah?
Yep.
Approval to change funding source for final bill for the Maple Shade Avenue Water Main Improvement Project of $12,815.75, originally from bonding to the Water Enterprise Fund, free cash?
That is correct. So, the project was approved for $480,000. We completed the project, or the DPW director informed me that the project was complete in May of 2018, and it was $424,000 and change. So, when we did the bonding, which the bonding was completed September 28, 2018, we bonded for $425,000 for the Water Main Project. Then we received in January a bill from the contractor saying that they realized they did not charge us for the remaining amount of the retainage, which was a $13,000 bill. So, taking the $13,000 minus the $425 that we were already approved, that leaves that $12,000. So, it's just changing the funding source because I don't think it's appropriate to bond for $12,000.
Any other questions from the table?
The project still did come in under budget, which was excellent.
How late was the bill? They sent it to us, like, how long after the project was completed?
About eight months.
You know what I would tell them to do with that bill?
We have a signed contract, so... But the DPW director has been in touch with that company to ensure that something like that doesn't happen again. The start of that project was under the former DPW director, so this was the continuage of it. But all the other ones, after we received that, he called to confirm that he did have everything for anything else, so we shouldn't have a surprise like that again.
Good. I'll entertain a motion. If there are no other questions?
I could do it. I'd propose a motion to change the funding source for the Maple Shade Ave. Water Main Improvement Project for $12,815.75 from bonding to Water Enterprise Fund, free cash.
Second.
Motion's been made and seconded. Is there any other discussion? Hearing none, all those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, please say nay. Motion carries unanimously.
Thank you.
Check and check. And now, similar to the unveiling by Apple earlier this week, we have our town managers' FY '20 annual budget proposal.
They are hot. They're depressed.
Okay. So, this evening and this year, you will see, I think, a new and improved version of the budget. We have worked very hard to address the concerns that have been...
Struggling with his chair.
Could you add a chair on the...
Plus a chair.
He almost hit his chin on the table.
First almost fell out backwards, and now I almost hit my chin.
And then a workman's comp.
Finally, that button over there is not fixed a lot, so you don't fall backwards. Sorry, Denise.
So, I'm sorry. So, you will see more detail, I think, than you've seen in previous years, and especially the cut in salaries and non-salary items for each budget line, each department, each piece of the budget. So, I will go over my statement at the very beginning. Tonight, the town council's receiving the town manager's draft budget. As was suggested during last year's budget discussions, this year's draft budget contains all departments' budgets as they were requested. No changes have yet been made to any budget other than corrections and/or clarifications. In addition, this year's presentation splits department budgets into salary and non-salary expenses to address last year's council request that more detail be presented in the department's requests. As in previous years, the director of finance and I met with every department head to discuss their financial needs for fiscal year 2020, and all departments were asked to explain any request except for contractual obligations that were increased from 2019. So, if you recall, the council had said they wanted contractual obligations, whatever those commitments were already, but anything else would have a description, and you'll see we have a little description in all of those as well. So, rather than have a second sheet that calls out each budget with a description, it's right similar to what I did for the capital plan, where it's right with the line Presentation highlights, projected revenue for fiscal year 2020. A few large changes from last year are a decrease in projected growth. It's not expected that the unusually high amount of growth we experienced last year will continue. So, to be realistic, we projected down, and you will find that both Sarah and I are pretty conservative in making conservative recommendations on revenue as well as trying to pull back as much as we can on expenses. Increase in other state aid is just a governor's proposed budget, the way they're changing some of the state funding. Increase in licenses and permits is based on this year's increased income from licenses, so it's current information that we have, due to better enforcement of the town's licensing and permit requirements, and you'll see it's a pretty big increase. And an increase in bank interest, which is due to where some of our town's banking is being done. Requested department budgets. In addition to the split in showing salary and non-salary expenses, the large increases in salaries are due, and they are, some of them are alarmingly high, and I've mentioned that to some of you already. During last year's budget session, if you recall, we were in the middle of contract negotiations. So, to preserve our bargaining in good faith, we could not put the salary increases that were projected for, we were in the middle of bargaining. So, there were no projections for some. We planned, and it was discussed with the council, that we would take some of the money most likely from reserve funding. Now, in addition to that, we had the, we were in the middle of the Collins Wage Study, which had comparables from other communities. There were some highs, there were some lows, and those were also, those are reflected in here as well. In addition to the projected increase this year, we are putting in standard 2% across the board, just as a safety net, so that we have the correct amount for next year, so this doesn't happen again next year. The 2% is safe this year because we aren't negotiating any contracts.
Those are just contracted for the unions, we put in whatever their union requires.
Right, right. Additionally, I did the Collins Center. There was also an increase in minimum wage, and places like, you'll see the departments that have part-time, the COA does recreation, although recreation is in their revolving fund, right? But there are some that you will see some minimum wage. Oh, and the school was a biggie.
The minimum wage is $12 an hour now in Massachusetts.
As of January of 2019, it's $12. January 1st of 2020, it will be $12.75.
And 75, okay.
Yep. So, it will go up in 75-cent increments until it hits $15.
So, again, the $12 was not budgeted last year, right? Was it? I don't recall that discussion.
No, it was not, because that was not finalized at the time when we did our budget.
Okay, so that was just a state-funded last year, proposed last year. No request for additional personnel is also, we have not cut any personnel requests, and there are requests for a total of nine full-time and four part-time positions. We have not increased, I don't think, any departments other than public safety. And, you know, the council is correct, we concentrated on public safety, but now the sort of back office is saying, wait a minute, you know, you're buying all these computers, but who's going to take care of them? We're processing more paychecks, more departments, how's that going to work? So, those are the primary reasons for the big increases that you'll see percentages that are alarming. A projected tax rate, as in previous years, the projected tax rate is very conservative as it is a shared philosophy of the director of finance and I, that at this early point in the budget process, we prefer to estimate conservatively on our revenue and lower the tax rate later. Makes us look more like heroes than if we come in with, gee, we didn't project enough and we have to raise the tax rate, or we have to come to you with our hat in our hand and say we need more money. I don't think with Sarah and I, unless there's something catastrophic, that will ever happen. The balance of the presentation is standard budget pieces that we will explain as we present each section. All departments will be available at the planned future budget work session to answer any specific questions from the council. Thank you, Denise Menard. So, the first section is sources and uses, and the sources, which is the revenue, projected revenue. You will see that it is a total of percentage increase of revenue is 3.56, and I'll give you a second to absorb what that is and what the makeup of it is and any questions you They're really the same standard things that we've had in years past.
So, as you can see, the Chapter 70 has the biggest increase of $828,000. The Chapter 70, we get, the schools actually earn that money for us, so that's where that one's coming from.
And that 7.36% looks familiar to me. That's what the governor is proposing as the increase.
Correct.
That's good.
Yep. Which is absolutely wonderful.
The other state aid there, up 40-point-whatever percent, what is, can you...
Again, those are what the governor proposes. So, it is the charter tuition reimbursement, it's also the veterans' benefits, and the elderly and VBS exemptions, so the governor's projecting.
Are those restricted to those areas that you named?
No. Once we get the revenue, we can use it how we need to. But the veterans' benefits, for instance, we get 75% of what we paid out, so it's just on a lag, a 12- to 18-month lag, so we've already spent it, now we're getting it back.
Through the president, I may. What's the, what's other projected revenues? What falls under that little catch-all?
That one...
Little catch-all of a million plus.
No. Doesn't everybody have a million?
No. We've talked about, and I don't recall either.
I was just curious, because it went down $94,000, not that it's significant amount, but I was curious what was in there.
That is the... Sorry, give me one moment.
No problem. Paul, please keep all the hard questions to answer.
Those are our transfers, they are other kinds of revenues. So, the meals excise tax, the payments in lieu of taxes, rental fees, other departmental revenue, the Medicaid reimbursement, that's a significant one, and then other recurring and non-recurring, such as our pilot program, other things of that nature.
Thanks.
Any other question on the revenue side? So, if we go to the uses, the expenses, projected expenses, you can see the bit of a change in the formatting. It is now seven pages, which is a lot of pages, but a lot of information too, I think. You will see, as I said, some of the salary percentages of increase are alarmingly big. Some of them reflect an added person, you know, a proposed position increase. Some of them will reflect, some of the large ones reflect a change in grade that was asked, recommended by the wage study. And then some of them are very stable budgets that came in as where they were projected. And then some of them are very stable budgets that came in as where they were projected.
Or have vacancies, so therefore we weren't projecting any-
Change in the salary.
Correct.
Or somebody left, and a new person came in at a lower rate. So there's a lot that goes into all of those, and the department heads, along with Sarah and I, can discuss those in detail when we discuss the, all the departments' budgets. Any questions right now on that?
Through the chair.
Yes.
All right, so nine full-time positions, four part-time positions. I almost think I need to see them like on a separate sheet, because this is kind of sum-totaled?
No, they are, they're noted.
Yeah, no, I see the notes of them.
You mean the dollar amount?
Oh, we're going to see them, yeah. You'll see them-
Because we can approve nine full-time positions and four part-time positions. So that's why I'm kind of, need to understand.
Yeah.
What is the highest priority? How much is each of them going to cost, broken out?
We have all of that-
Base salary plus total compensation?
Yep, the department, each department has that information, comparables with how they got to the salary, the reasoning behind it, and job descriptions as well. So that, when they present their budget, you'll get all that information.
Yeah, and that's fine, I don't need to get in, like, I don't want to get into the weeds, but I think you're going to have to, because it's just, everybody has a need, I understand that. We need to understand how they break out, or I do.
Absolutely.
Just to follow up with what Mr. Ford is saying, that certainly what you're describing makes sense, and it will make more sense to us when we see it. But is it possible to extract all of that data from the various departments and put that on a one-page force?
Yeah, I'll bring that to the next, to the first budget session.
Yeah, I was picturing a spreadsheet.
And I mean, we can cross-reference, and we know it's embedded in here as well, but sometimes-
Absolutely.
-having that sitting right in front of us makes sense.
Absolutely.
I think we were both thinking the same thing, we can do a spreadsheet with the departments, what they are, what the positions are, what the expense is, and all of that.
Good, thank you.
No problem.
The legwork, the legwork's already been done.
Yes.
You've given us a total, it's there, it's just putting it in a format where we can look at it.
And we've, we've broken it out, we've got it all, all the detail.
That's not a problem.
Not at all. Any other questions? I know seven pages is a lot to absorb.
I, through the chair, I just have one question on legal services.
Yes.
We're always very, very low, and last year we decided to bring it up to what we consider industry standards. Is that how we're looking at it now, with these projected amounts?
Yes, actually, it was the suggestion of, we went to council and asked how much they thought. I think it's seven, seven, or 13,000 more than, no, it's not even-
Seven thousand, seven thousand more than last year, yeah. So there were some cases that have settled this year and have finalized, so the projection is to have a lower expense than what we currently have for fiscal '19, but it's because all of those things have finally come to a conclusion.
Well, it's an increase.
Correct, but the actual expense for FY '19 is higher than what we are requesting, and so-
And some of those, if you recall, go back to prior to, they were inherited.
To board a select room timeframe, so some of them, it's taken a couple of years for them to be settled, so.
There was an F-1 on there, yeah.
Well, they're much more accurate compared to the years in the past, because we brought them up to date last year, and now we're looking at, we're only looking at possibly 7,000 versus, I believe it could have been off as much as 50% last year.
Right, yes.
That is correct.
And-
Yeah, so you're really tightening up on that, that's great.
So with the-
Kathy, I'm sorry, I do have a question about the IT position, positions. So when we talked to Ryan about supporting the one-to-one initiative, I mean, these are kind of like a bundled deal, like you can't support it without people. So is he confident that, because he's been understaffed just the way they are now, and then you're going to add a lot more-
One full-time.
And one full-time person and two people working eight weeks a year?
Right.
They're during the summer when the schools are closed.
I realize that, I mean, I guess-
School season is, I mean, the summertime is the time that the schools really use the computer, isn't it?
Well, they do, they clean everything up.
It's that time of year that IT is very busy on the, on the school side, so having the two part-time. And again, you can ask him those questions when he comes, because he, he proposed it. Like I said, this year we did not cut any, so we took their, we had them clean them up, and if they had things in the wrong categories, we, you know, had them change that. But, and we listened to their reasoning behind all the proposed added personnel. So he has good reasoning for why, we didn't suggest that he cut anything there. That was his raw information.
Yeah, I guess, I just want to make sure he can support it year-round. You're adding a lot of workload to a group that's already understaffed, and you're going to bring one person, you know, I just want to get a good return on investment, it makes sense to do both, but he's got to be able to support it, so I guess I was expecting to see.
More people requesting. I know that he and I have had discussions earlier in the year. I meet with him every month.
I mean, he knows his craft, I'm not-
Yeah, no, he's redoing the way he's staffing, so he's sort of just moving parts of his organization into more focused, and that may be, there might be efficiencies there as well, I don't, you know.
Okay, yeah, we'll, we'll have a chance to ask.
Yeah. Don?
Question, planning zoning conservation. I see a 9.9 increase due to legal notices for master plan. Where are we with grant money and applications for grants for this master plan? Is there a way we can be able to help offset some of these costs and further, you know, and this may be better directed through to Connie, is where are we in this whole process with the master plan? Because the last thing I saw was that rather, just a soft-touch-
Survey.
Survey out there, which really was just kind of, or just soft information, because it really didn't go into the details of what these constituents want. There wasn't information limited to citizens and businesses of East Long Meadow, it could have been anybody applying for it, and I haven't heard anything. So I'd like to know a little bit more about it before we start committing to publication.
We will make sure to pass on that, those questions to Connie. I have not been involved in this at this point, so I'm guessing it's in a slightly earlier phase and not in the final phases.
Well, certainly I have talked with Connie a number of times about the master plan, and it's something that she's planning on getting accomplished this coming year to get it off the ground. It's a process that probably will take more than one year, but this, this first piece will certainly be something that will require a lot of meetings and a lot of advertising. So that's, that's where she's headed, she's certainly not there yet.
But we don't know if there's been any attempt to get any type of state grant money, have we talked to Pine Valley Planning Commission?
I have asked her to do that.
And we could follow up to see where the status is, that'd be great.
Yeah, yeah, I will do that. Any other questions? So you'll see the summary of sources and uses, after you go through all seven of those pages.
Kathy, I have one more question. I know last time we talked about the highway project. Is it in here somewhere in terms of how are you guys proposing to address that?
No, it's not in this part.
So that would be separate.
Do you want to move on to the tax rate chart?
Mm-hmm.
So this is, this is actual, so you'll see, last year, actually, it was higher, it was projected to be higher than 2018, correct?
Last year, the projected rate was 2180, when we did our presentation on April 10th. When we, when the town council approved the budget, it was a projected rate of $21.09, and the actual rate that wound up being approved for fiscal '19 is $20.55, so 54 cents less than what the town council had approved.
And lower than the previous year.
Correct.
So it was a decrease in the tax rate.
Yes.
So this year's estimated tax rate is 2215, which is a big jump, but nothing's been touched.
But that's at first blush, so there's a potential for it to be less, based on our discussions and our-
Absolutely.
-choices or-
Correct.
Allocations.
And I know I've said this in past years, but I'm very conservative with my number, and so I'd be shocked if that's what it actually wound up being.
So the capital plan is the same capital plan that was presented, with the addition of Stormwater Enterprise Fund, as recommended. If you recall, if you, when you're going through this in more detail, you'll see that the capital plan, I think there's a huge increase percentage-wise in the capital plan budget number. And the reason for that is, if you recall, last year, toward the end of the budget process, that Financial Advisory Committee met, and along with the school board, and there was a number of people, I remember in the room, and there was a lot of creative things done to take things off the capital plan that were actually addressed in a different way, either through current, last year's current budget, because there was extra money, or something hadn't been ordered, and they could do it a different way, or what other, what other ways did they do it? Because there was like half of the budget.
We had done free cash for-
We took some, late in the fiscal year, some of the departments that had projected remainders, if you will, I can't, I'm not saying it in the surplus.
Surplus, yeah.
And we knew they weren't going to need that, we moved things, you know.
And you can do that late in the process, but it, it makes it look like we're increasing capital by a huge, like almost doubling it, and really, it's because last year, it's not all reflected as capital for this current year.
So if you compare the capital request this year compared to 2018, it's a 1.7% increase, so very minimal.
So there are no surprises there, that's really all it was. Okay, then we move on to the enterprise funds. And I put title pages in it this year to just maybe break it up, so it's not just a blur of, okay, what page is she on now? We have no idea. So the enterprise funds, if you recall, the sewer-water enterprise funds are recommended by the Public Works Board. The Stormwater Enterprise Fund is a new proposed fund, that I'm sure there will be significant discussion about. LCAD Enterprise Fund. And stop me if you have questions, if you want me to go back. And then we're on to revolving funds, Chapter 90, and receipts reserved, which is a new one for us all. So the revolving funds are the standard ones that we've had in the past, the solid waste, the Council on Aging, and the Health Department, which is for the Sharps Program.
We did leave the descriptions in there just to make it a little bit easier, rather than you having to reference the bylaw.
Mm-hmm. The Recreation Revolving Fund is separate, because it follows different, a little bit different of rules. The Chapter 90 money is what we receive for our roads from the state. And the Receipts Reserved Fund is a, is being established for the ambulance.
Has been established. So Receipts Reserved for appropriation is a, is a type of fund that is established by mass law, in that there's an actual section of the law relates specifically to this type of service. That's why it falls under a different section, and why it runs a little bit differently. You can only spend from it once it's been appropriated, so you would be voting on the amount to expend from there, not the revenue aspect of it. The ambulance fund started this year, because the ambulance started, and so we do have money in there, but we can't spend from it yet, so there is money currently in there. And just to give you a little bit of background.
Any questions on any of those? And the last is the community preservation. Last but not least.
Yes.
It has been.
When you close your eyes at night, you-
Kind of.
Yep.
Yep, and when I'm driving to work.
Wake up at weird hours, and I'm like, okay.
Dream about revolving funds?
Pretty much.
But I think I've told you, I like the budget process. You have a logical putting it together. I like it better when it's, the numbers aren't so high in some places, but we'll get there.
It's a lot easier to follow this year.
Oh, excellent.
More organized.
Absolutely.
Yeah.
Thank you.
What is the right word I'm looking for? Well, additional information, but in a format that's easy to follow, the document is user-friendly. Not a criticism from previous documents, but as we've refined what we're all looking for, I think it certainly reflects all the effort that's gone into it to-
Thank you.
-help all of us do the right thing here, to try to do as much as we can with as least amount of expenditures as possible in the interest of the taxpayers.
Thank you.
So that said, now we need to have a little bit of discussion on your proposed, we definitely need the workshops. The workshop we had a few weeks back for the capital improvements went, I thought, very well, liked that format, and so you had some proposed dates for us.
So it would be April 2nd.
Which is next Tuesday.
Next Tuesday, and then two weeks later. But I think to, to give you all enough time to make recommended changes, we probably should also include it in the agenda. Do we have much on the next regular council agenda?
We have a couple of public hearings, so it'll be more extensive for tonight.
So I can put a call out, I know that, for instance, the fire chief said, I know you're going to have workshops and we're going to attend. I can't make a particular one. He can't make April 2nd. So I would put the public safety group probably to the-
So you move things around based on his prep, that makes sense.
Yeah, so depending on what you want for a block of time, I will then probably, what I've done previously is do like 15-minute intervals, so that you have a concentrated amount of time to have their undivided attention, address any questions. They can come back with more information if they need to after that. If you think you need longer, it just makes the meetings very long, because we've got a lot of departments. So what's your pleasure?
How is everybody's availability for next Tuesday?
I may have a challenge for that day, but I'll have to get back here. I can make it.
Should be, I don't think I can make it, but. So that sounds like two folks probably cannot.
So, um, what's your pleasure?
How is everybody's availability for next Tuesday?
I may have a challenge for that day, but I'll have to get back here. I can make it.
Should be.
Yeah, I don't think I can make it, but.
Uh, so that sounds like two folks probably cannot.
Did we have a suggested time? Were we thinking of five P M. again?
That's what I was going to ask you. If you'd like to do earlier, they, they, um, departments would probably
I'm just trying to accommodate those. The time is
It's
Difficult.
It's up to you all.
I'm okay with five.
I'm, I'm fine with five.
So five P M.?
If you don't have
Yeah, I'll get back to you.
So April second at five P M.
And do we want to go till seven thirty? Or is that too long?
I wouldn't want to go beyond that because
Your eyes start to glaze over after a while.
Your eyes must cross at some point. So ours will be doing the same.
Okay.
How long did we spend on the first one a couple of weeks ago? Was that only one hour because it flowed into our council meeting?
We, it was two, it was two, about two hours. So
Yeah, the, the budget workshop was two hours. We did five to seven the last time.
Right.
So what if we do seven thirty and maybe I don't schedule the whole time so that there can be discussion of the coun, council, maybe the last twenty minutes of
Or if we have other questions that require you to get some other information for.
Or just discussing what has, what, what you've gotten for information that night.
All right, that's one down. Now the second proposal was the sixteenth of April. I have a conflict that whole week. So just saying that.
The week of sixteen, I mean, the sixteenth. I'm completely open.
Okay.
On the sixteenth?
Um, I'm going to try to adjust my schedule for what works with the group. But do we have to go two weeks out if it's a conflict?
Well, then we would have to do another one prior to We have our normal meeting
Back to back.
The week before. We could do one later in the week, but we're going to have two that week. And that's, that's tougher on people, I think.
Yeah.
So we meet again for normal business, other regular business.
Would be the
The ninth and the
The ninth.
Twenty-third.
And the twenty-third is when we should be presenting the final
Because it needs to be presented before May first.
Right. And May first falls on a Wednesday. So, um, we have to present before then.
Now, the council could meet the fourth Tuesday
Of April.
Of April and then have a special meeting like April thirtieth, which would be a Monday to meet the criteria of the
That's a Tuesday.
The thirtieth is a Tuesday.
The thirtieth is a Tuesday. Oh, it is. Okay, so. Would that work?
What if it snows?
Oh, come on.
Well, realistically, we could
I mean, we can handle it if you're out of town. If there's six of us or, I mean, I Which, which do you talk about? I'd rather spread it out. I'd rather stick with the, I'd rather stick with the sixteenth. And then our normal meetings are the ninth and the twentieth. So we have
With it being the last day of taxes and I'm up in the air, in theory, I should be all set, but
What do you want to do, the seventeenth?
Theory, I should be a hundred and eighty-five pounds, so.
Yeah, you and me both. Um, we can, we could do the seventeenth or eighteenth. Eighteenth probably better for me than, but it's a Thursday.
I'm away that week, so I can't, um, I can't adjust that.
I'm fine on the eighteenth.
It's really hard for me to project that far out because of my schedule. Sorry.
Remind us again, what's the parameter? We, for May first, we have to
Do the, the final, the proposed budget.
The town manager makes the recommendation of her proposed budget and then the town council has until June first to vote on the budget.
And somewhere in between it, we have to do the public hearing, right?
Correct.
Between May first and June first.
When do they have to have the public hearing, by?
Well, it's going to be submitted by June first. So usually
They have to have a public hearing prior to
Prior to, so
When is that?
May twenty-second or third, whatever that Tuesday.
The public hearing?
Public hearing.
I thought it had to be before that.
Kathy, you want to do Monday, the twenty-ninth then? Give ourselves one buffer day, just in case of something crazy.
I'm, I'm okay with that.
I, I would think the list would come way down as we work toward this, right? We'll be zoning in on a couple of specific topics, so.
Yeah, the second, the ninth, the twenty-third, and then the twenty-ninth would be our last, you know, final draft that's proposed, I mean, that the draft, it's the proposal on the twenty-ninth. And then the following meeting in May, following Tuesday in May is the, um, when the public hearing will be. That'll work. So we can skip the week that you're gone.
That would work for me. I don't know how everyone else
That probably works better for everybody, obviously.
Okay, so do we want to do any presentation, any, any departments on your regular meeting of the ninth? Which you probably would want to
Sure.
Chip away.
And you will know from your conversations with department heads who is not available on the second and you'll schedule accordingly.
Yes.
Yeah.
Uh, I'll probably call a special meeting of the department heads so that we can just get all the
I don't think it makes any difference to the council in which order we hear the information. So
It's going to work the list out.
Yeah, we're going to just
Yeah. And some of them, it's Sarah and I anyway, and we're going to be here, so. Okay, so, um, the second is a definite?
At five.
The ninth is the regular council meeting. Do we want to start it earlier? Do we want to start at five and, and do
Mr. Florence, do you have a lot of things on the ninth already?
Uh, we have a couple of public hearings. It, it's medium. It's not heavy, heavy, but
So we could throttle back taking on anything you
It's the first reading.
Are those public, the public hearings are, is the subject matter such that it's going to, we're going to get a lot of, um, audience?
Well, it's the first reading of the Stormwater Enterprise Fund bylaw.
Okay.
Yeah.
So that's more council discussion probably than folks coming forward.
Second one is just, it's more procedural. It's these, uh, amend the zoning map for fifty-one prospect
So that's pretty much for functory too.
Easy, yeah.
All right, then put some on the, uh,
Do we want to start at five and we could do budget at five? Five to six, or is that too difficult for?
It, it's more for the folks that are working full-time, yeah.
If you do it at five, at least they're here.
Right.
I might be late that time in Boston, but I, I'll get here when I get here.
Okay, so we'll start at five.
So second and ninth were five, right?
We put two and nine at five.
I'll confirm, I'll confirm these and give you a slate of who
But on the ninth, we're only going to go for one hour and then it's just going to flow into our meeting.
Correct.
So we can probably get a lot done in that hour too.
Yeah.
So recap on what happens on the second.
Yeah.
And then the twenty-third is a, an, our second meeting of the month and that can be at six, or you want that at five too?
It's up to you all.
Twenty-third, you said that's your final budget proposal, right?
Well, we're
It should be, but if you're going to do
Yeah, it won't be then.
Or the, the, yeah, the thirtieth.
We could do it the following Tuesday. You'd have a special meeting for that and it would just be the budget presentation and then we'd still be meeting the charter.
So the twenty-third, we're going to start at five too?
I think you're going to need it.
Yeah, I would say yes.
But that, that one's a little bit out, so let's see what I get for, um,
I'm almost inclined to say until we hit May first where we have met the charter
You're going to be together a lot.
That we can, um, live with, we should do five o'clock and then we can ease back to six.
And not every week.
And not every week.
Okay.
Good. Thank you.
Do we have one other one that week? That, what?
Twenty-ninth.
Ninth?
Monday, the twenty-ninth.
We have, we're doing a budget meeting on the twenty-ninth as well? Or that's going to be the present, that's going to be the special presentation?
Right. Oh, I thought you said the thirtieth, which is a Tuesday.
It's just the extra hours.
Yeah, we said the twenty-ninth just to give us the, because it has to be done, has to be done.
By the thirtieth.
By
By the first.
Well, by the first, yeah.
But we want to give you more than the overnight to get it back together. If we met on the thirtieth, then the following day, and you're not ready with all and whatever we may have said.
Oh, I'm sorry. I misunderstood. I thought we were presenting on the thirtieth.
Yeah, we can present on the thirtieth.
So you want twenty-nine and thirty?
No.
That's why I'm confused. I'm like
Who's on the first?
That's why I asked.
Twenty-ninth is Monday.
Right.
Thirtieth is Tuesday.
Right. But we only need to meet one time, correct?
If you want us to do the presentation on that, that last couple of days, we'll do that. Rather than The twenty, twenty-third, we won't be ready.
Thirtieth is fine.
Twenty-ninth.
Twenty-ninth?
All right.
Okay. It's harder than I'll put together a calendar so that you all see what I'll pass it by you, Kathy, to make sure that you and I are on the
Same page and
We'll both understand. Okay. Okay.
Through the chair, I just have one question for Sarah.
Yes.
I was just curious, to move the tax rate, let's just say we want to move it down twenty-five cents. Are we, are we looking at approximately a half a million dollars?
Yeah, probably.
We had a metric. Can you just give us that metric again?
Number a little bit? And you don't need to do it now.
Sorry, I just closed it. Yeah.
No, but provided for us on next Tuesday, so we have that sense in our mind. We did. It was just trying to, you know, you try, as we
Right, but the, the property valuations changed, so now it could be a slightly different amount. So I'll rerun it for the figures of today and I will have that at the next meeting.
So we can do
The reason I ask is if, if we start, you know, it's just one way of looking at it. If we're starting with a mill rate, at least we have an idea on what kind of dollars it's going to take to move it north or south.
So what I've done in the past is in increments of like twenty-five cents.
Yeah.
If you go down that much, how
Yep, I will have that for you. Not a problem.
We can do that.
Anything else that someone can think of now that I should put there?
Thank you again. This is a lot of work and
Thank you.
Appreciate it.
You're welcome.
Okay. There we go. Mr. Ford, drop your names again. Yes.
I, I know, Sarah. I, I know you need to leave. I just, uh, I wanted to, uh, remind you that you were going to send us a vehicle list on the last budget meeting and that we haven't received that yet. So if you could, please.
I want a vehicle list?
Vehicle list, yeah. From the police department.
Oh, yes, yes, okay.
I have that, Sarah.
Okay, everything, we're set then on budget? All right. Thank you very much.
Thank you.
H C, old business, C one, a zone change petition for Zero P's Road. Mr. Martin is, oh, yes, he's here.
Ready?
Ready? Thank you for your patience tonight.
You're welcome. It was, it was less dry than last time.
Again, thank you for the, uh, the backup information that you provided for us.
You're welcome.
As well as for copying that. Uh, when, um, we set this agenda item aside last two weeks ago, uh, it was for an opportunity for, for the council to have a look at that information and, and, you know, let the thing, the thinking percolate a little. So, um, I'm a little concerned that since we only received it yesterday at four. And it's significant as, and it's, it appears extremely detailed and, um, I've looked at it quickly online, but looking at the paper copy, uh, it's, it's a sizable document that I feel has, uh, warrants our, our concerted study of it at some point. So I, as, as chair, I'm, I'm not comfortable with trying to, um, engage in discussion about that tonight because I don't feel informed enough to ask informed questions. I, also, just for the record, uh, since the last meeting, um, it's my recent understanding that uh, there is a complaint against the town filed in Suffolk Court relative to uh, action taken by the planning board back in November. Can you?
I'm not involved in it, but I understand it's in the land court, which is seated in Suffolk County.
Right.
And, uh, Mr. Maynard, I think is involved with that. I'll be at the town.
Okay.
I appreciate where you're coming from. Uh, Mr. Little unfortunately couldn't be here tonight, so fortunately he didn't travel from Minnesota. But I do have a question, which I discussed briefly with Tom yesterday, and I think he thought your council would be here today. And that's procedurally how this is moving forward. At the last meeting, uh, you know, there were several questions or comments made, public hearing, when are we having a public hearing? And I've combed through, um, your charter agreement and I've combed through your bylaws. And there doesn't seem to be anything that varies from chapter forty A, which is the chapter on zoning, which I assume many of you are familiar with. I know Don, on his years of the planning board, uh, lived and breathed it. And, um, you know, the process is spelt out in chapter forty A, which your bylaws defer to in terms of filing a petition with the town council, which we did in this case. Town council at that time reviews it and can vote to, can vote to refer it to the planning board for a public hearing or choose not to. Uh, in this case, you did. We did have a public hearing, which was properly noticed and publicized. Although I thought the public hearing went well, it did not go our way. But that, uh, like in any other zoning petition case, gives the petitioner applicant the right to come to the decision body and say, you know, here's the facts. It wasn't a recommendation. We still would like you to grant the zoning, uh, petition. Uh, and, and so, uh, I just want to understand, and as does my client, what is the process? Because as you gathered from me last time, I thought that was the public hearing because it was on the council agenda and, um, it was, you know, it was a public open meeting. And it may not have met your definition, but if, you know, if the council has adopted some rules and regulations, I heard, um, Mr. Anderson represent last time that there was a subcommittee of this council on zoning. I, I couldn't, I didn't get any material on it, but, uh, I says I couldn't locate any material on it in terms of its authority, you know, what it does, whether it conducts the public hearing and then reports back. But in terms of, um, the process, I, I, I would have assumed based on what I found, and I'm certainly willing to be educated, that last time we were here, that would have been the public hearing. And, uh, I understand that, um, uh, you know, in speaking to Tom, that it wasn't noticed.
It wasn't noticed like that. It would, our agenda would say, public hearing, first reading, second reading, or what, or whatever.
I understand that. So, you know, um, for, you know, it, for other matters in which there's a public hearing, you know, you apply a butter's list and, you know, you pay for the dissemination. None of that was asked of us. So in terms of procedures, I'm just trying, I, I anticipate this won't be my last time before this board on this matter. And my client wants to know, what is the process, if anyone can articulate, if it's, if it has been defined for the, after a planning board hearing, what needs to be done by the petitioner applicant to make sure that the next visit in the process before this board is a public hearing as opposed to a meeting greet.
I'm hesitating there while I put my thoughts together. Certainly when we visit this topic again, because it doesn't look as though tonight is in the, again, I'm speaking for myself, in the interests of, uh, the council to, uh, you know, go through this document and, and speak informed and thoughtfully.
And we're not asking you to rush to judgment here. We want a thorough, uh, consideration by everyone. But on the other side, we want to understand the steps. This is new to some of us under the new format.
Yeah, I'd say a quick comment. Um, so I did a little looking after last meeting and because I was a little confused about the whole process myself. So we're not required to have a public meeting if we don't agree that there's something more should happen and there would not be a public, uh, meeting at all. So in this matter, you know, I'm trying to understand, you know, this particular project is different than the actual land usage. The project and the land usage have to be looked at separately because you can't guarantee to us that it will always be a solar farm. So I'm trying to understand what is the next step because planning made a decision.
Well, made a recommendation.
Right.
Not, not a decision.
Okay. So now it comes before us. Last week, we had limited, you know, materials to review and, and now, you know, so now we're getting more. And like Kathy, I did not have time to go through this whole thing, um, since yesterday. So my apologies. But we will go through it. So, so that's where I'm trying to understand where, what do we want the next step to be? Um, in fairness, you know, to them, um, because it doesn't, we don't ever Because it doesn't, we don't ever have to have a public hearing if we don't agree that something more should happen. That could be the end of the matter with us.
Correct. Don, you said, Don wanted to speak.
Basically, it's, it's somewhat analogous to what happened on the, the package machinery project, which is actually apparently, maybe or may or not be coming back to us. They come to us first, and we refer the matter to the planning board for recommendation. The planning board gives a yea or nay, and then if they give the, you know, go further, then it goes to a subcommittee, which I just have in the chair, and that's called the Planning Matters Subcommittee. We end up working through more of the technical questions and so forth, looking at the proposed bylaw that you're submitting, looking at it and so forth, and then this subcommittee will make a recommendation to the, to the council. The council would then, if it chooses, then have public hearings. The public hearings involve two, a reading, a first reading, then a second reading. Then you need, I believe, a super majority of the council for a zone change.
Sixty-six two-thirds, yes.
Right. So, that's, I think, where we, where we are at, at this point. I mean, basically, what we saw at the last meeting was just a comment about, you know, just a street name. There was no description, there was no, there was no material that we had to work with. We didn't know whether the petitioner was coming in to say something, that they had issues with the planning board. We didn't know whether, we didn't know. All we had was just the, the street name. That's all we saw on ours, there was no backup material that we had to support it. So, we didn't know where you were going with us to say, hey, we, we're upset with the planning board, we want you to know about it. That could have been the end of it, as far as we knew. We didn't know where it was going, as far as the council, as far as the material. We did get the material, you know, it was late on Wednesday, or late on Friday, and they made copies, and it didn't hit us till about five o'clock at night on Friday, which many of us didn't see till today.
It was Monday.
It was Monday.
It was yesterday.
Monday, it was Monday.
And Tom had nothing to do with that, that was.
All right, it was yesterday, yeah, so it was even worse.
And I made the copies to save the.
We appreciate that, thank you.
Thank you, appreciate it. So, the question I think I, we have to ask town council is the matter of PLH LLC against, not the planning boards, against the town of East Lawn Meadow as a defendant, is whether engaging in this, I mean, we see you are, you know, you have a stenographer here in the last time, and that's usually indicating of a litigation, is, are we in a position, with the advice of town council, to even engage in this while we apparently are defendants in this, not just the planning board?
Well, I, I think we've addressed that issue internally, and you absolutely are, I believe, and able to treat this independently as the zone request matter. Obviously, if the zone request is granted, then the, the land court case goes away. So, I don't think that prohibits you from conducting this. The, the issue, Mr. Anderson, through the chair if I might, is you are the permit granting authority under Chapter 48. You have, the planning board does not make an ultimate decision on a request for a zone change. They just make a recommendation. You have to make that, and you have to make it in some forum. So, what, was the forum just come before the planning board at its next, I mean, the Board of Selectmen at its next meeting? And say, we're here, we want to make our pitch again, and, or is it to have a public hearing? And go through the process that Don just required? It's not spelled out anywhere that I could find on.
It's not going to go.
So, for the public, you know, I could not, on behalf of, I could not find out this process. If it's written down, I'm, you know, we're happy to take it and, you know, follow it. But if the public hearing only occurs at the subcommittee level?
No, 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 through the chair, no, but it doesn't, it doesn't occur, it's not for the subcommittee. The subcommittee meetings are strictly, yeah, I mean, the public is involved. You know, it would be a, you know, a matter of our, getting our committee, asking you some questions, and getting some, you know, if you want to do a further presentation, and then come back and report to the council as a whole. The council holds the public hearing. We, basically, it's like a work session, to kind of work through things. You could be throwing a, a bylaw out that, you know, that really needs just to be further looked at. I mean, it's almost like back in the planning board days, and if you were coming in with a commercial project, we might refer the matter to design review to come back to us. So, all it is, is just looking at, I mean, we have people on this committee, on the committee consist, and this, and they were pointed, you know, by the council. Myself as chair, we have former planning board members and former chairs of the planning board, Marilyn Richards. We have Ralph Page, also a former planning board member. And we have town council members, Tom O'Connor and Mike Kane, that's the group. And so, we would engage in conversation, trying to understand, trying to find out, raise some questions of concern, and then hone a final product. Because as, as the plant, we're not stepping into the planning board shoes, because what the planning board is doing is making a recommendation with their authority. We have the authority to, to make a zone change, which we don't take that authority lightly. We take it very seriously, as we should.
As you should.
Because a zone change, and we have to remind ourselves, a zone change is not a project. It's not a site plan review. But we don't have site plan review authority, we know that, the statute is very clear on that. We have the authority to designate where appropriate a piece of land and totally change its use to another zone. Or, in the alternative, to create a brand-new zone. But what's before us is this piece of land, a budding enfield for summers, to change it to industrial zone.
Correct.
That's it.
And if the distinction between package machinery is a zone change, so, from a zone change is to create a bylaw. So, that's a very different process in terms of how you judge a bylaw, in terms of language, structure, that sort of stuff, in, in my judgment. But if, if for this purpose, the council wants to follow a process whereby it's going to be referred to your subcommittee, and it's going to be commented on that, and then that committee is going to advise the full council, and the council will then notice a, a public hearing, we can live with that. But I will, you know, for what it's worth, suggest that that's not clearly articulated to anyone coming into this process. And as long as I'm here, I, and we're, seem to be, the trend you seem to want to follow is that, is that I think I want to raise an issue if we're going to go down that way. So, as much as I respect the two members from the planning board who spoke, you know, Ralph and Marlene, they spoke against this at the planning board, so they should be disqualified from being someone who's advising this group on, you know, on this petition. I think that's a very fair thing, and I don't want to get to a hearing and hear, you know, and then get into that issue or get to a meeting. Once a citizen chooses to publicly be adverse, then they can't serve their position, I don't think. But that's my position on that, I'd like it addressed, it's.
Thank you.
I think to simplify, the first thing for us to do is take the information that you supplied and digest it. And then that information, you know, we'll, we'll discuss it at our next council meeting, and at that point in time, we'll decide whether we want to refer it to the subcommittee or not. So, that's a decision we make. We might not want to defer to our planning board's subcommittee. We might make a decision right here at that point in time. But again, we have to look at the information and then digest it first before we really have any direction.
Mr. Florence, I saw you pointing to some, do you want to make?
Yeah, if it's going to become a new bylaw, we have to follow the same process.
Of course.
Right, we schedule a public hearing, we have to do a first reading, and then seven days before the second reading, it's got to be published in a local.
But, but it's not a new bylaw.
It's not a bylaw.
It's strictly just a zone change. So, I don't think you have any of those steps, correct me if I'm wrong, Don, but on a zone change, you don't have a first reading, a second reading, on a zone change.
But you've done, you've done zone changes, and you've done public hearings for them. So, it hasn't been done in the past. It's, it's not some, something that's being done just for this.
No, that's fine to have a public hearing.
That was my point initially, if.
It's just a zone change, you're right.
So.
It's just a zone change.
Probably.
Right. I'm going to recognize Mr. Kingston in the audience from the planning board, the chair of the planning board. And then I would like to entertain a motion to table this for now. And in, in the interim, we will digest this information and make sure through our council, Mr. Maynard, that we are, you know, crossing our i's and dotting our t's here as we move forward in it.
So, Madam Chairman, is that a table, or a, or continue to the next?
Well, it's a continuance, I mean, we won't.
I'll make a motion that we continue it.
Well, I, we have to recognize Mr. Kingston.
I'd like to, through the chair, remind the council that the zoning map is an integral part of the zoning bylaw. A change to the zoning map is a change to the zoning bylaw. So, it is a change to the bylaw. Thank you.
Or we choose to disagree on it.
I'll make a motion to table this till the next meeting.
But the continuance.
How much? Continue, not a table, to continue.
Which is what, April 2nd?
Ninth.
But we just put a whole bunch of budget things there.
That's all right.
Yeah, we're starting early.
Okay, all right.
We're doing five to six for budget.
I'm sorry, so just restate that, for the purpose of clarity, for the, for Jeannie. This matter until the ninth.
The matter is till April 9th, the meeting April 9th.
Just to spin the discussion through the chair.
Let me just, motion's been made and seconded discussion.
Just to be clear, this is still a first instance conversation. The last time we spoke with the petitioner, it was, we didn't know what it was. We didn't know whether, what his thoughts, what your client's thoughts, we didn't know what. We just thought, we just saw a street address and so forth. That was, and now we have this. Just today, I have the packet, I have the email packet, O'Connor, you know, Monday after hours, but I didn't see it till today. And I picked up a copy of the land court complaint as well, which I have not been able to fully read. I just saw just enough of it to make me pause, to make sure we're not in a situation that I'd like to further my conversation with Attorney Maynard in here, because you're, you know, like I said, the town of East Lawn Meadow, what I'm seeing is, is a defendant, not the planning board of East Lawn Meadow.
That is correct.
And that's where I, that's where I'm trying to understand that we're intending, you know, intending litigation as a town. Records are copiously kept by your stenographer. I have to ask our town council again, we think, you know, that I have this, I received this from the clerk's office, because when I got wind of something like this, which I didn't know, I just, now that, now we're reading it, is, are we in a point where we need to put this in abeyance until this settles, if we are defendants on this?
You, you need to discuss that with Mr. Maynard, I will tell you.
Exactly, and that's why I don't really want to put this up for, for a, a motion vote until we have this conversation.
So, that's the purpose of continuing.
I just got it today.
The petitioner's position is that.
Right, that's right.
The process of seeking the, the zone change does not, is not interrupted by any collateral on the larger topic of the issue of whether or not Zoller's has been stifled in the town. That's a very separate issue.
Okay.
So, Madam Chairman, I just, for the next meeting, what, if, I'd like to know what is expected of the petitioner.
Okay, let me just finish the motion, and then we can answer that for you. Motion's been made and seconded to continue this matter until our April 9th meeting. Hearing no further discussion, all those in favor, please say aye. Those opposed, please say nay. The motion, the matter's continued. I'm sorry now, what, for, because your client is coming in from?
Minnesota.
Minnesota. What is it that?
At the next hearing.
Right.
Will it be a public hearing, or will it be a further discussion based on your review of the packet?
It'll be a discussion based on our review of the information.
So, we'll be here available to answer questions that you have, or anyone else in the public house?
Yes, yes.
Not, through the chair, not everyone in the public, if she chooses.
No, 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 right.
Yeah, so the question is, it's not going to be a public, it's going to be a public meeting, but not a public hearing.
Correct.
At this point.
Right, so.
And again, this, this is, you know, assuming that we are clear with town council, SCL, to make sure that we're, you know, we're okay as, as we delve into all the paperwork we are going through today.
Sure.
Okay, thank you, Mr. Martin.
Okay, you're quite welcome. We'll see you again.
Thank you.
Like I said, it won't be the last time I'm here.
Item 8D, new business, summary of the action items for the next meeting. I won't be redundant, you just heard what is, what our homework is, is to read all of this information. Your homework also is to sharpen your pencil and look at your budget and get your questions ready, and.
We have budget calendar that I'll provide and follow-up information.
Sarah will pull that, extract that information about positions and all the pertinent information on one page for us.
The vehicle list.
And the, the asset list, yes.
And we have, we have to get information from Attorney Maynard on, on this.
Oh, yes, yes, discussion.
Because obviously if he says, we can go, we don't want anybody flying in.
No, of course, and so we'll do that this week to, to make sure we're clear.
There's also actually the, the possibility, if, if the council so chooses, to discuss this in executive session, because there is pending litigation.
That's right, so we can go into it, and that might be the best way to.
You want the town attorney here to advise you on that litigation piece.
Of course. Okay, so, all right, we want to, we need to go, we're off topic.
Microphone. One other point as far as, if before you, before, I think one other point I wanted to mention as far as future. Use it on my laptop. Topic we're on right now, this action.
Yes, action items, okay.
All right, I sent over to Denise and Kathy something I found on the town of Barnstable website, of their town council, they're, they're set up similar to we are. And they, and we, I hopefully captured the part of their town council meeting whereby they voted to rename a public building. And I sent that over just for your comment, because we, I do have the comments by, you know, about the swimming pool. And we were looking how we do it. Well, I know I was dealing with something I saw in Yarmouth newspaper, but now I see something actually from the, a town council, former government, and it's right, it's item six of that meeting, I think bullet point one or two, maybe two.
I saw that, I, but I was working on the budget today.
Oh, I know, I know, this is, it's just I want to make sure you guys got it, because that's, that's an old action point. But I wanted to get something more on point, that a town council apparently does have authority to rename.
I think, I think you all come up with the process, and I have, I think I said, when, when it was discussed last year, I gathered a bunch of different examples of ways that you can do it. So, there's quite a few different ways. It can be the town council, it can be a special, like a subcommittee that includes somebody from Parks and Recreation, and, you know, depending on the kind of building it is, or facility it is.
But we have to define a process.
So, there, I do have examples of processes.
Bylaws, or whatever.
When you're ready to discuss that, I, I probably have a file that thick with.
Okay, just want to make sure, you know, just want to.
I will, I will add that one to it as well.
Mr. Florence, nothing for executive session?
Nope.
Hearing none?
Second?
Quick on your feet, Mr. Manley, and thank you for that. Motion's been made and seconded to adjourn. All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Those opposed? We are adjourned at 7:31, and we will be back in session for a budget workshop on Monday, Tuesday, April 2nd, at 5:00 p.m. Thank you.